Okay, so meeting order, Delmar's gonna lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you Lord for your many blessings and we ask, Lord that you'll be with us through this meeting and uh let us make the right decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes and reports?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve the notes.
Okay, any discussion about them? David and Delmar.
Okay.
All in favor of paying the bills and accepting the reports?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
How was minutes and reports, right?
Right. Okay. Have y'all got a chance to look at the monthly bills? Any discussion or questions about them?
Motion, I don't.
Okay.
I second.
And David? Any discussion? All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
All in favor? We're assuming three of us? Okay, well, there's no citizens present to, or Echo, did you want to say something?
I probably have something to say, but it's not coming to mind.
Okay.
Yeah, I might think of something before the end. You like your like chamber updates and things, but I was out of town for a week, so I'm a little...
Alright. Mr. Bras?
Okay. Mark Bras, Clender and Associates back here to get through the contract documents this evening with City Council for the water tower. So last meeting you awarded a contract to Viking Painting for three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to re-coat, same blast and recoat the water tower. And tonight they've sent their bonds and our insurance back, we reviewed those, so you have a performance and payment bond in place, you have a certificate of insurance for the project in place. And we are requesting that you authorize the mayor to execute the contract agreement with Viking Painting this evening.
Is there a motion to...
No motion.
Rick?
And David?
David, Rick, David.
Any questions about it? When will this start, Mark, or do we know?
Uh, we should be getting, once we get the contract documents back to them, we should be getting some submittals on the paint, make sure that they've got the right paint, right materials in place to use. And we'll also get together with them on what we call pre-construction meeting and just line out all that schedule. I had heard originally later this month or early July. So we'll try to zero that in, but we'll be having a meeting, setting up a meeting to line all that out. Cause there's some things like coordination with getting antennas off the tower, we want to know those timeframes so we can can notify those people, the time periods in which they won't be in use. We've already coordinated with them, but with no dates.
Okay.
There's not anything to do there yet, so. So that's the best I can answer right now, but we will have a schedule that we can share with you.
Okay, so is this for both of them? I mean, these are just duplicate.
Yeah, yeah, there's two sets there. The second item that we need to, to do is a contractual item. When you sign the contract, you have to give them a notice to proceed. That starts the contract time or the clock for this. This is a three hundred and sixty day contract, it's not gonna take three hundred and sixty days. They're gonna do it this year, but that's the time period we gave, because if we shortened it too much, they would have jacked their number up more, so. The notice to proceed date would be today's date. And so we would need the mayor to be authorized to sign the notice to proceed.
I'll make the motion that we...
So, did we vote on the last where Rick and David voted authorized to sign the contract?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We don't want to have to look back at Echo's recording.
But it'll be there if you need it.
Okay, so now this is the notice to proceed.
Yes.
I'm starting to make the motion.
And you're making the motion?
That we let the, authorize the mayor to sign the proceed document.
Any discussion?
Was there a second?
Oh, a second.
Oh, Mark, okay.
All in favor?
Okay, the last item is, is the project tax exemption letter. What this allows them to do is purchase materials specific to the project using your tax exemption letter. So you're a tax exempt entity, you shouldn't have to pay taxes on materials that are being used for your project, so. That has a specific time, that window is set to match the contract time in there right now, and it specifically states what that covers. So it's not a free range for the contractor to do whatever with it, so. We need the permission from the mayor to be able to sign that document as well.
And I get a motion to sign the tax exempt letter.
I'll make the motion, the mayor can sign the tax exempt letter.
All second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark, where do I sign all this?
Should be where you have paint tabs.
Well, the one kind of came off.
So write down where it says owner?
Owner?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
So, and there's just two copies of the same thing?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's two packets there of those forms, so you sign where all those paint tabs are.
Alright, just wanted to make sure we got signed in the right spots.
We don't have to pay for that, do we, for the paint, all that stuff, does the city have to pay for it?
You don't have to pay tax on it. Yeah, the paint is all included in the contract.
Why they don't say you have to pay for it to get it, or?
No, no, they furnish it.
It's why it kept going up, right, the price of paint went up?
Paint and scarcity of it, and then labor. Covid did a number on paint, let me tell you.
Covid didn't help us.
Roger and him just to scaffold it up and down.
I thought we should have the...
Roger wanted to climb, didn't he? This one's good.
You're coming at three hundred thousand, you know?
I'm gonna leave that one to Mark.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
You do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
You guys have a good evening? Thank you.
Okay, Roger? You can start the department.
Hey, the ditches look good, Roger.
Yes, they do.
It's getting started, yeah. First thing I'm gonna hit you with, we need some dumpsters, we're short on them. So we need about three, four yarders and a couple eight yarders. They would like that, yes sir. Like you were told we did. The price of all of that is sixty-one seventy-eight and we have a little, right at seven in there, so. It's budgeted for that, we are getting short on them a little bit.
Are people renting that many of them?
Yes ma'am.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yes ma'am. But you have to vote on this.
So, motion?
That's the first thing I want to talk about was that, so.
To get some more dumpsters? I'm sorry, Rick, did you? We need a motion to...
You wanna go ahead and do that?
Till that, yeah, let's do it, so we don't forget it.
Dumpsters?
Are we talking about the...
Alright, I've already motioned to go ahead and get the dumpsters while we're here.
Okay, so Rick and...
Stacy?
Stacy, okay.
Anybody need to have any discussion with it? All in favor? Everybody likes that one?
Okay.
Okay. You got your dumpsters, Roger.
Good.
Okay.
It'll be in our budget, we're good.
Which, is this the little cemetery you...
I'm Jim's favorite.
Yeah.
Okay.
He mowed it for many years and he asked if we could help, so we've been helping.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been used to it.
Did you?
Well, then he mowed it.
It doesn't take very long.
Yeah, that's right. Jimmy's been on it, Eric Leonard.
Okay.
He's mowed it for many years. These guys never did.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Never did, Jimmy's mowed it for many years. He asked if we would help, so we just jumped up there and take both mowers, it doesn't take very long.
Yeah, I've mowed it all in my life.
Yeah. But we, they never did. So we can do that pretty quick, we do.
It's been ten years.
Yeah.
You got any filler left that you could, north of Billy Hunter's, there's some big old potholes right there?
Yes.
Could you do that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Everything looks good.
We started ditching on these Jacksons today, so.
Blue room sidewalk looks excellent.
Thank you. We'll get a lot of compliments on that one.
Item number fifteen, does anybody have any discussion on that? Did you get a, wanting to hire Lucian full time at fourteen dollars an hour?
I haven't had a chance to look at it, calculate it, even know if that's a possibility.
She didn't know about it.
Okay.
Is that what he's making now?
Twelve fifty.
Yeah, what's Jordan making right now?
Sixteen? I'm not sure.
Yes, we'd have to look at the whole pay scale.
Yeah. We can't discuss that.
You can, it's public.
Well, I did find out this weekend that going into closed session, we are authorized to do that, not mandated. The only thing that you have to go into closed session for is if it's a juvenile, a court case, or abuse. Otherwise, to have the authority to, you're not mandated to.
And also I can call over here and ask Margaret, anyone's salary, it's open, it's a sunshine lawful. Every city council member, every city employee.
I was kind of surprised.
Along with the county, along with the state, so.
Oh, yeah, I knew that that was open.
It's not just the elected.
That is totally our choice if we decide to go into closed session for that. But then after we come out, it's public knowledge.
So...
Go to closed session.
Exceptions to the sunshine law, there is kind of like an exemption where, say that you're talking about private information for a single individual, and this would really come in heavy and like a disciplinary action that, um, and I'm sure it has been, I couldn't give you any court cases off the top of my head, but it would be absurd to think that it hasn't gone through the court system kind of proving, making the exemption available, where things that need to be said, that council isn't held liable for slander, you know, so, things like that. Social Security numbers, that is not public, if something like that is gonna be divulged, that would absolutely be a closed session situation.
Don't we have to post a closed meeting?
Twenty-four hours.
Four hours.
How long do you need to look, look over in a week?
Hell, yeah. Definitely.
Do we want to
Run these numbers?
Schedule a closed meeting in a week, so we can discuss this?
In a week, yes. That gives her enough time.
Monday the seventeenth, then, I mean, Monday seems to be a preferable meeting evening.
Not a good, Peggy time to look at it, but then they're not waiting a whole month for an answer. Does that sound reasonable?
If we have forum here, I mean...
Yeah. Or if you have to make sure you're here. I also found out that Dot is the most powerful person on this board. Cause not only does she have a vote as an alderman, if I'm not here, and there's a tie, she gets another vote.
And Dot knew that.
You go, girl.
She's got more power than I do.
I'll bet you got a whole power you want.
I still remember how fast you nominated me.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We'll give the phone numbers just as easy, you know?
Roger, is that okay with you?
Very fine.
We'll meet next Monday?
Very fine.
Okay. No, I've seen that, there's people at that park every night when I come home, and it's nice to see.
They're playing pickleball down there by night.
We highlighted it a lot, so.
And we're still gonna do the other side, too?
No damage to the bathrooms?
For a while.
And all the lights are still in the shelter houses?
So far.
We stayed by cameras down there, wouldn't we, you know?
Yeah.
It was.
I've heard that the new mayor go around, it's kind of fun.
Yeah.
Did you ride it?
Yeah, I rode it.
No, I rode it.
There were several kids on it today.
That's good, though.
But I know when the push, it made it a little difficult.
Yeah, yes, it did.
Luckily, there's no video of that.
Yeah, there is.
Is there anything anybody else has that you want to talk to Roger about?
We're ditching now, painting on the Hoarder Hill. Next week to do the pothole and patches, and well, after that, we'll lay that road.
And you got Dot the animal locked out now, right, she can't get in?
Dot's out, she can't kick in. We gotta get the little gap for the bottom of it, to fill it before we shut it, but other than that, it's done. I don't know if y'all seen it, but it looks a whole lot better.
I even like that.
Good.
Everything looks good.
The sidewalk could've been, sounds to compliment on that. So, that's all I have.
Alright, well, thank you, Roger.
Oh, wait. Picnic.
Pardon?
Do you guys want to host a picnic down at the park this summer to kind of show off all of your new equipment?
Like have an open house?
Yeah, kind of for the park, maybe just do like an afternoon or an evening of hot dogs and hamburgers and maybe get somebody down there with some music or a speaker. Do you have thoughts on that, is that something council would be open to doing, hosting a, some type of park event, early enough in the summer to kind of show off the new playground? Gear, all the improvements, the basketball courts?
I think it's gonna do it.
You guys?
Oh, I don't know what I can.
I can help with planning.
I thought you were the cook.
Yeah, I can help with planning, but there would be a little bit of a cost, as far as if there's gonna be, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers and chips, maybe some waters, could be minimal. Do you have thoughts?
Is that something we can discuss next Monday, if we have a chance to think about it, and it's not necessarily a closed session thing, but...
I mean, I mean, we could kind of highlight in the paper that we have all these improvements and have pictures and invite people to come and see.
Yeah, that'd be a better idea.
And that would be expensive.
Yeah, a barbecue.
I mean, I don't know.
I think the biggest lift would be, would be easy enough to get the citizens' bank to help out with their barbecue. I think it would, the main thing would be getting somebody to actually cook the food and do a little, I can help with planning, but whatever the cost will be, I'm not gonna be able to help that.
June, I know, I don't have any little ones playing ball or medium sized ones, but I do know that the, people would have kids that play ball.
Yeah, I would, I would think July.
They're playing right now.
Yeah, they're playing right now. I, I know they're just every night, I mean, anybody that's involved in that, they're not available for...
Yeah, June, we're too close, it wouldn't be enough time to have anything in June, I don't think. And in July, we want to stay away from four each week, but then after that, I think.
When is four each week, do we know?
It's in July.
Second week, it's after, it's not the fourth week.
I think we probably put it on our water bill this month.
It's on corn fest.
Probably the second week, yeah, always seems like it's a city council meeting.
What we thought of the minute?
Do you know if Corn Fest still doing a three-on-three tournament?
They have it now, for sure, we do.
I see the park would be a nice place to do that now.
Yeah, it would be now, but we have the basketball.
They have some to occupy the, the little ones, too, and we can think about that.
Right.
Come up with something maybe at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Got time to think about it?
Maybe the board would have some thoughts by then.
Okay. Who is next? Miss Maggie. Roger, are you all done, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything special, should have the audit the next meeting.
Right.
We've just about wrapped it up.
Almost finished.
So we should have that.
I saw the bill for it.
Oh, yes, yes, the invoices are there.
End invoices.
So, everything else seems to be okay.
Thank you, Roger, great job, good guy.
Thank you. I'll tell him.
He's in the waiting room.
He was ready.
Any questions on the report?
Did you move?
Good.
On that demolition grant, is there anything we can do to help you?
What?
On the demolition grant? Is anything we can do to help you?
Not right now, I mean, we're gonna have to make sure we get everybody signed up that was previously signed up before, still working on that.
We can encourage any of their neighbors.
I'm trying.
You know, any, any place I know of.
Have we gotten anybody to license their car that was on the list?
A few.
So what do we do about that?
Letters.
Letters, letters, what after that?
Well, after the time elapses and take the prosecutor to the court.
I got, thank you, I told you about mine, I got a license.
Expired, was it?
It was expired.
Said I pulled in my drive and I was looking at him on the camera, what's he doing?
Well, I missed delivering Linda's packet.
Yes.
Cause I turn, I go, I see, I was like, oh, I turned around, I'm like, huh.
Tow that baby.
Is, is there anything we can do, like that trailer, Geraldine McMurray's?
I talked, that was, that's in a contested court hearing. There's several people involved in the, you know, contesting ownership between those two properties and the forty acres. I talked to the judge Friday, he was gonna send out a message to all the attorneys that somebody needs to do something with that, so. And if they need to add it on the cost of the, for the trust or whatever, they're gonna do that, but Judge Wilson said he'd take care of it.
So I know it's several years ago, we got in trouble for mowing yards like that, right?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in trouble.
Pollard's is not that bad.
It'd be nice to be able to charge them, but if we get it.
So all the, the stolen vehicles, did they decide those were juveniles?
They think so.
Yeah. That's too bad.
But the one that was, was recovered in Quincy, didn't seem to be, other than the key fob was gone. You know, they had to get a new key fob, but other than that, no damage.
That's good.
Was there any parts in town damaged?
No, there was one that was sold from Knox City that has been damaged in Knox City and recovered here, so.
Who's phone is that?
Your neighbors there.
It's important. On my part, you know, we've been talking about the agreement with the county. We're gonna need to come up with some form of agreement. I think Peggy's got some points with the mayor. Obviously. Some issues that we need to discuss as far as the mayor.
Do you have a list that we can kind of discuss, some of the things that need to be discussed?
We talked about, uh, the fact that the city also does things with county, and then that there would be questions regarding Ryan's vacation time or sick leave when he's all during the day when he's, would be covering.
Take it out of my mind.
What else did we talk about, Ryan?
Talked about on-call time.
The on-call time, and then it'll be, uh, how you want to pay, if we want to pay quarterly or whatnot, and the amount, the way.
Yeah, I would rather see us do quarterly than annual.
Getting hurt quite so bad?
We need to have a clause.
You know, if you have an agreement with the county, it's really depend upon what the sheriff at that time is in agreement with.
You know, we need to have a...
And that changes, it can totally change.
But we need to have a clause in there where, you know, renew yearly, because with an elective position, you never know what's gonna happen from year to year, and if they want to continue to do it, you know, the next sheriff, you know?
And that either party could get out. If, if, uh...
Yeah, like thirty days notification for either party.
You never know, we might have a retired law enforcement walk in and just want to retire the job.
Right.
That would be great.
It would, yes, cause then they will be totally committed to city. You know, as it is, county has to prioritize county. And so they could be anywhere in the county, so we won't be their priority. But we had kind of discussed, we had allowed about forty thousand dollars for salaries for another person, and divide that up on a quarterly basis and maybe have ten thousand dollars a quarter. Hopefully that would help them hire an additional person, so that they could have, you know, more coverage.
We've been running, you know, the same agreement that, you know, now, we have been for a few months, and it seems to be working okay. I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be flashes at some point, you know, if we're not gonna have dedicated service. I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be flashes at some point, you know, if we're not gonna have dedicated service on nights and weekends, but. Think they've been, been going okay.
I think it's a really good idea.
Uh, we would have to have a, a legal document.
Right, so. To the attorney.
You know, as far as.
Draw up something, you think?
Mm-hmm, so as far as the cash portion of it, you know. If everybody's in agreement, you can actually start that. And then, you know, it would be. We'd still have to have the agreement, the legal agreement placed later, but we could start that if chose to do so.
I'm sure the city attorney's gonna want all these details as far as.
Put it in writing.
Who's doing what?
How much vacation would you need coverage for?
I get two weeks right now.
And how much does he get to take?
I haven't been able to take.
That's.
My full two weeks since I've started, you know.
Yeah.
And you're, how much are you on call now?
I'm on call now from, uh. Midnight to four in the morning, or midnight till I come on at. Seven thirty or eight.
Yeah, three days.
So it'd be nice if he could be the second backup, so if they're out on call.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
I mean, right now, the sheriff is on call. You know, for the county from midnight until he comes on. That's how we've been doing it.
But he deserves some time off, yeah.
But if we have, I mean, if they're able to hire a different person, that's, you know, that could possibly change.
Turn about a first name, yeah.
So like if the sheriffs, we talked about reasons to cancel the contracts, like if the sheriffs say they lost two people. They would not have enough to cover. So like if their staffing dropped to a certain level and we'd have to figure out what, Carl, what that level would be.
Yeah.
Or.
Well, actually though. You know, Knox County, the citizens, they gotta pay county taxes too, so. They're still required to cover the city and if we didn't have a police officer.
They would still have to.
They would still have to cover us, so, you know, hopefully by doing this, we're letting them know that. You know, we're supportive of them and hope they can hire somebody else, cause it's hard. You know, like the pay rate they're at to hire somebody, um.
And find somebody responsible.
Well, responsible and, uh, it's a dangerous job.
Reliable, yeah.
Can you think of some reasons why the county would wanna nullify a contract?
I can't see.
Well, the sheriff's wishes.
So we're gonna need to get a contract drawed off, drilled up then to take to them? Do we need a contract drilled up to get, to take to them?
We do.
But we need to get some details.
As far as what you all feel like should be in the contract. You know, we need, definitely need to have something in there as far as being able to get out of the contract by either party.
Yeah, that's like a year, year to year deal that we just.
Renew it.
Renew it, yeah, and make sure everybody's happy either way.
Really, it's just us wanting to be supportive of our county.
Yeah. And we could help them out, they help us out if we get our money to another person, yeah.
So probably needed to agree on a dollar amount. To kind of be able to give attorney information.
Are we okay with the forty thousand a year that we would? Then we, if we were in a position to hire new, it would only be, that ten thousand dollars would only be committed for one quarter. So we would still have the rest of the money. There, we're not spending our whole salary budget at one time.
Well, that's what we're gonna spend anyway if we had somebody else hired.
I mean, if we did quarter by quarter.
Yeah, you know.
Cause you're not gonna find anybody that's, you know, not gonna deny the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, once you figure out salary, then insurance for well above the forty thousand dollar mark.
Yeah. So we, we want them to cover for Ryan for vacation and time off.
Nights and weekends.
Nights and weekends.
Okay. And it can be renewed yearly. And either side can nullify the contract with a thirty day notice.
Correct.
And it'll be paid ten thousand quarterly. Is there anything else we need to make sure is in there?
We could mention some of what. Ryan's covering for county, I mean, this is supposed to be a, an agreement, a two-way.
Yeah.
Thing.
So you cover for court, don't you?
Yeah, you know, and I take hold if he, you know, the sheriff has to be out the county or whatnot.
Sometimes, yes, help transport prisoners or. Bring them to court.
If something goes south, you're both gonna be there anyway.
Oh, yeah, you know, and I, you know, I don't think it's anything that, I mean, we can put it in the contract, but when you work in. Two small departments, I mean, you're pretty well working the one team anyway, I mean. Everything goes on and.
Kinda like fences make good neighbors, though.
Yeah.
There's a reason for a nice little agreement.
Yeah.
There should always be a contract when money's exchanged, there has to be a contract.
I mean, from my part, helping them, I mean.
So you cover the courthouse proceedings and then you cover and you help them.
As needed.
Okay.
So does on-call need to be discussed in there?
You mean the on-call thing, I mean, if they're able to hire somebody else, I mean, that's just gonna be subject to change, you know, so. I don't know that it, that necessarily needs to be part of the contract. We need to put in there the, you know. About amending the contract. Partway through if they're, they do hire somebody else or we need to amend a portion of it if something wasn't working right, but.
So that would have to be by a vote of the council, right?
I think any amendment to any thing would need to be.
Now, is this something that? The county would have to agree to, or is this just with the sheriff's department?
I don't believe the sheriff can enter an agreement, uh, a, a contract without approval of the commission.
So to amend it, we would need a vote by the council and the chair commission.
I think the, when the sheriff is happy with the contract, I think that the county commission will have to approve.
Does anybody have any comments?
It's a great idea.
Do we have enough, do you, do you make a vote to take it to the attorney?
To, yeah, if they have agreed on a lot of these things and we. Get to the attorney and then she may come back with, you know, next meeting they have more questions.
Does everybody pretty? Understand what we wanted to put in the contract? Somebody have a motion for us to submit this to the count, to the attorney, so she can draw us up a contract?
Make a motion.
David?
David.
Dot? Is there any, any more questions? All in favor?
Well, I'll add before we go on to number nine. That, um, the tornado siren had no effect on the noon whistle.
Which I misunderstand, so.
Yeah.
It just rang right after noon whistle, one, one day a month.
And it's a timid clock on Wednesday?
First Wednesday of the month was tornado drill, sorry, and then noon, the news will be off.
Okay.
That's only that.
So do we need to?
So you need to vote to.
To vote to.
We need a motion to reinstate the noon whistle.
A motion to keep it on.
I just hope we get as many happy phone calls now as we get angry. Keyboard warriors. Thank goodness for Facebook.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay.
That was embarrassing, but it's.
It's a bearing people.
Now, the Knox County Promotional Committee is requesting a. Donation, monetary support for the Corn Festival and a picnic license. To allow the sale of beer at Corn Fest.
Can that motion be all together?
Yes.
I made the motion that if we give our normal monetary donation.
Did you say it was a thousand?
Which has been a thousand dollars.
And approve the picnic license.
Okay.
And that'll work second, too.
And Denver.
Okay. Okay. My turn. Oh, sorry, all in favor of giving the promotional committee the thousand dollars and approving your picnic license? Everybody. At least I haven't skipped anything yet.
So that last thing of yours, that adoption of the section five oh four ADA grievance procedure.
What is that?
Uh, Chris Feeney with regional planning is going over all the files and things he needs to finalize the. Community Development Block Grant, the emergency one that we got for the building that fell down and it's already. Been completed, but this is one of the things that, uh, was not in the file. Uh, we comply with that, but we don't have paperwork that has. Grievance procedure, the grievance procedure is, which they come in here and. Sign a form, you know, to say if they've got an issue.
It should be filed within ten days after the.
Yeah. Has to do with the American Disabilities Act.
One, so far, it's pretty ADA compliant, there ain't no barriers on that.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, we're, we're all doing the right thing, but we need this little form that says. We have a form that people can sign.
We've got a policy for it, or a procedure.
Yeah, so we need some.
Do we need a motion to?
To authorize the mayor to sign this, to adopt this, to give us the procedure.
Is there a motion, so?
I'm making it.
Dot, is there a second? Call second, Stacy?
Stacy.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't know.
You care? Okay. Well. I think it's. We've had a lot of complaints the last week over the whistles, but I think overall it's been pretty good. I did go to that. Newly elected official training. The first day was interesting and our last lecture of the day at four o'clock was a one hour from the FEMA. Who is not a gifted lecturer. Yes, yeah, a lot of good things to say, it was just at the end of a very long day of setting, but it was good. Um. Learned a lot of stuff. The, uh, probably after the, um. Not having, going into closed session, it's not mandatory, the other thing that really got me was. Say, you and Stacy got together and talked about stuff. And then one of you went to wreck and dot and said, well. David and Stacy said, and then you gave yours, that's a meeting.
That's a quorum.
That's an illegal meeting.
Even though you weren't together, so if you're gonna do that, don't repeat what the rest of them said. But as soon as you repeat it to the other two, you've had a serial meeting. And they, they said they are, we had a municipal lawyer there, he said. Lots of issues with that.
Here's another one, if you're sending any sort of text message on your phone to Margaret or Roger. No, it's not for people, it's anyone. If any of you are discussing city business on text message, that becomes a public record.
Yep, sunshine law.
And failure to turn it over upon request would be a crime.
So if you need to discuss city business, call or go see them. Try to stay away from your emails and your text messages, it's so easy, it's so much easier, though, but.
Get out of them text messages.
Nope, they, they become eternal, so, just to protect yourselves. Call them or go see them face to face, and generally, face to face is better, especially for somebody that's got an issue. You can, cause you can infer whatever you want in a text message. So it was. And this guy, he said he's impeached a lot of people. Off of the city council. And some of the stuff, it's like, why would they try that? You know, you're gonna get in trouble, but. But I think, after listening to some of them, I feel very blessed, the, uh. The alderman or councilman from Warrensburg. Gets paid a dollar a year. To be on the council.
Oh, yeah, some.
You're the highest paid in Knox County.
The University City in Saint Louis guy gets absolutely nothing to be on the council.
I'm glad you went because it's a good network and talking to the mayors and things and.
It is.
That one, I went on the same one.
Met the mayors of Atlanta, or not mayors, sort of the aldermen. And they were having trouble with code, their city code and violate, they don't have a police department, so it's like, who, who enforces it and. Figured who they were talking to, might have been Richard Sheath, who said, you need a code enforcement lawyer, does not, or. Code enforcement person. Doesn't have to be a police officer. Just somebody to enforce the codes and then they take the violation to the prosecutor and you can handle it, so. They were quite happy, cause they've got all these issues and. But, um.
I didn't catch it all on the. But the councilman in Quincy got in trouble for something.
Yeah.
Did anybody hear that?
I guess it's always, if. Better to err on the side of caution, just. Think about how, if it could go wrong, how could it go wrong and, and try to protect yourself the best you can. I sure hate to see anybody get in trouble, especially unintentional, you know, but, so. So, um. Just keep reporting that people have issues and I'll go talk to the. Powers that be. But I. I don't know what you guys thought, sir, but I, I so far enjoyed my two months. It's a real eye-opening experience. So, yeah, I did get down there and they gave me the wrong number, room number. So I took my key and I went and opened the door, I thought, oh, I'm supposed to have a single room, this has two beds in it and somebody's stuff.
Oh, no.
And it was the day manager that gave me the card. So it was not real easy to relax the rest of the night. What if she does that to mine?
Yeah, she could do that.
Yeah.
And first of that, well, did I get the wrong door? They go, no, the key opened, the door had.
Right, yeah.
So. It was kind of funny to watch the looks on your face when you resolve that problem. So July, I have to go for a FEMA training for the floodplain, the ball field. So July I have to go for a FEMA training for the flood plain, the ball field and down by farming, the old farming home. So that ought to be a interesting meeting. And we have regional planning, June twenty sixth.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, all day long.
That'll be, will that be your first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All three committees.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so thank you all for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, meetings are okay, got to, like I say, the networking was great. Um, Richard Sheets, our lobbyist, he's, he's good, very good.
Yeah.
But, um.
Once you're all trained up now, you don't have to do anything wrong.
Yeah, well, you know, that learning curve. It's a ninety degree turn.
You second in command.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to go too.
She's done been there, done that.
I've been there, yeah. Delmer and I went together.
You're a freshman course?
I believe your wife was with you, wasn't she? Well.
That wasn't your wife. All right, is there any, do you all have anything?
No, not now, but we took care of the.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The whistle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you took, that was your main thing, you took care of that.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, David's got that.
David's.
I'll second him.
All in favor? We are done.